This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call Shannon.
Mr. Creo.
Here.
Mr. Butcher.
Here.
Mr. Gandy.
Here.
Mr. Roke.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Commissioner White will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, ask for your wisdom, guidance, and the decisions we make for this city. We ask you to offer a hand of protection over us, our families, and the world. Most of all, we want to thank you for your privilege that you give us to live here in the United States of America, and most of all, for your never-ending forgiveness. In your heavenly name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father. To the States of America, in due regard, which is tense, one nation under God, indivisible, with its pure and justness. To the little island of New Mexico, and to see a symbol, perfect friendship, of all the united colors.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bowles, concerning discussion on the agenda. There's no discussion on the agenda, roll call Shannon.
Mr. Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Roke.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Creo.
Yes. Do you have another motion?
Make the major motion to approve the minutes from March 20, March 14, 2022.
Second. Motion was made to approve the minutes by Commissioner Bowles, seconded by Commissioner Gandy, concerning discussion of minutes. There's no discussion of the minutes, roll call Shannon.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles.
Yes. Yes. Moving on to Commissioner and staff reports, Shannon.
I bid to you from the state, the state in our election results, more certified, well official, and I think next meeting will be doing the reorganization.
Kennedy, that's for Shannon, any questions? No questions, Ms. Kennedy, Chairwoman.
We're working on the budget. We are having a department manager meeting tomorrow to pretty much finalize where we're going to be putting some expenses this year. We're doing a lot of reorganization of these funds. And there's approximately 4,000 accounts. And we're going to just go through all of those, take out any duplicate accounts. We've got accounts that are duplicated between general fund and regular funds. So it's just a lot of cleanup to make it a little bit more straightforward. And then we will ask the managers for specific numbers based on the discussions that we've had on the one-on-one budget meetings. And I will be given on the deadline for when I need to get those numbers submitted. And then we'll go straight into input and get a final budget put together, and it'll be coming to the commission for approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Kennedy, Chairwoman? Thank you.
Chief Moran. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I'm happy to announce we hired two police officers today, one certified, one zone certified. We currently have an additional non-certified officer in the police academy, so that takes us up to 19 officers out of the total of 28 slots.
Any questions for Chief Moran?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
You said about 28 slots?
Yes, sir.
And how many of them positions are we looking to fill?
These two positions were previously approved by the mayor and the city manager. It would be great if we could fill another two, let's say before the fall. We generally look for certified officers, which are hard to come up with. But when you get uncertified, we put them through the academy, and that process takes up to a year to train them and get them through the academy. So we can find like the one officer that's good today. He's at the hospital. He's ready to go, pretty much.
There's some of the other ones not certified.
Right, he'll go through the academy in July.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to collaborate on that a little bit. So what, how many officers have we had frozen, five, right? Five positions for?
Right, so we could technically hire another four. I'd be happy to get another two.
Just, just one.
And the bare minimum is three per shift. We have four shifts. We really should have four per shift, especially at night.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Chief, it was our mayor commissioners. We also had a new hire testing this weekend. We were anticipating five applications. We only received three of those three applicants. We had one was a no-show, and then one that did not pass. We were only able to hire one out of this last testing. So we will be going back out for those other three positions and trying to get more applicants. But that has a lot like answer.
Any questions for our Chief, bizarre? Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Bowles.
Yeah. Read the short form of the thing.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, I do at this time. I would just like to read you something. This has to do with my fellow and past commissioners on some of the accomplishments we made during my term in the city here. Commissioner Gandy, and the new magistrate, Ms. White, Mayor Creo, myself, and Commissioner Bowles. There's some of the accomplishments that I had opportunity on sitting in with these wonderful commissioners. It's, you know, new playground equipment, you know, for city parks, restrooms at Avenue B, you know, new restrooms, fencing for the children, so they'll keep them safe from, you know, running in onto, you know, the highway there. The insulation's of a splash park, his golf course at Chaparral, retopping of several streets here in the city that we worked together. Our new magistrate court, you know, as a commission, you know, we all cut our heads together and said, hey, let's do this. It was awesome. And work with the county in itself, the, for the ground, the building, the courthouse. And one special thing to me is our veteran board that we got together and helped purchase property for that. That was an awesome deal that, you know, as commissioners and the board and working with the city, that we really got that done. And just to keep it short and sweet, I'd really like to say I really enjoyed serving the city, working for the people. It's been awesome, right? I've learned a lot of these gentlemen. And the city employees are the ones that really make the city. I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud that I had an opportunity to serve with them. And for that, I just want to say, I thank the commission for doing the job that they do for the city. We say God bless you all, and let's make love and continue to grow. Thank you.
Commissioner White.
I'd just like to let Bernard know he'll be in. And don't go way too far, get on the other board somewhere to visit us sometime.
Still here, I still love him.
Right, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gandy. Shannon.
May commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight.
State manager, Dr. Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I have a few items. First of all, I've been working with Ms. Taylor and other staff to prepare the baseball and softball fields. I've been working with Mr. Bernardo and his staff, working to improve the fields. And our goal is to start the kids to play ball now at the end of April will be the practice. And so we're moving forward, and we are anticipating a good turnout in our baseball softball field. And we plan to start this season and continue to grow both athletics, baseball, softball, flight football, and soccer. So before I move on, if there's any questions that the commission mayor have concerning sports this summer?
Yes. Commissioner?
How are we coming along with the, as far as the fields, as far as water and everything?
So in the, and if you would allow me, I would like Ms. Taylor to make a few comments on the softball fields, if that's okay with the commission and mayor.
Yes. Okay, so Keith Love has been every Saturday, oh, Edith Taylor, Keith Love, okay. And so we have met every Saturday for the, number of March. Before spring break, we went out Friday and worked, as well as Saturday, just to get more days in because it was nice and pretty. So we are pretty much after this last Saturday completed on finishing what we can paint. And there's a few touch-up places that we need to go and do this Saturday. I visited with Dr. Martinez, and he's offered the park guys to come, because I don't want the kids on ladders. And so he's offered, and I've talked with Knights of Columbus, for them to send out some guys that would get on ladders that we could paint from where we can't reach all the way up. And so, and then we're going to also paint the outside of the fence around where the school boards are, just so that it looks more pleasing as you drive in. And I'm in the process of looking at a quote on plechee inside the field, on, just because there's so, a lot of weeds have grown up, and we have raked them and put them in trash bags, but there's still a lot. And so just to see what plechee would cost. I'm getting some quotes that way on, kind of fixing it up a little bit more. The city has fixed the bathroom, one bathroom, one was okay, I don't know about the third one. And then they have checked inside the concession stands. Things are working inside there, water, it looked like today that the water had been, they've gotten the water sprinklers, because it did look like today, because I went out before, because I wasn't there Saturday, just to see what they had gotten done. So it did look like there were, water had been put on it today. My husband used a tractor and we plowed the, in all the fields, all four fields. There were, he didn't think at this time we needed to add any plechee. And so, but there were spots on the outside of the plechee where it meets the grass and out where gophers have been that needed to be filled, some holes. The city said they would look at doing some of that. So I haven't gone out in the field yet, because we've been painting, so I'll do that. But I think we're pretty much on target of what we said we were going to do and get things going. We have our first lineup tomorrow. Some of the girls signed up for the baseball. And so in looking at what the baseball said today, they are going to reimburse them and then let them come play softball, so that we don't have softball girls play baseball. I wouldn't want my daughter playing baseball with those guys, but, so they are going to reimburse those families for that so that they can come play softball. Anything else or questions? I said we were going to look at aggregate and talking with, so I went to Dallas this summer, this weekend, to see my grandkids play, and talking with someone there, and then visiting with the one that Mr. Lewis gave me connections with. I talked with him on the phone this weekend as well. And so in order for us to do, we're saying, we first have to have a base. And that base has to consist of sand and clay. I don't know where we're going to get that from at this point, because in talking with PB Materials, they just have Masonary stand. We don't want that out there, on there. So I don't know where we get that. I visited with someone in Albuquerque, they haven't talked back. I mean, they were in spring break too, so I'm sure some families left during that time that worked there. So I'm in, so I'll have to wait on that. But other than that, I think the fields are ready, we're waiting on bases to be ordered, I think, and to replace some of those that are not bolted down like they should be.
So as far as something for the end of April, we're pretty much spot on?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because we can practice something without it being fully finished, but once the game starts.
That's what I was concerned about, how the quality of the field goes out there, you know, youngsters running around, stuff like that.
And that, yeah, and that's why I was going to go out and just recheck the holes, because I told you if you make it in the dirt, we would be more than welcome to, you know, go put it out there and submit they could do that. Because as I said, my husband said there were some pretty big holes. And I know what they do at my yard out in the country, so I can.
One of the other issue for lights, we need to make sure.
Yes, they do have, security lights were put up out there, so there is a lot of light out there. But we didn't know about the nighttime lights. I don't know if that was.
Chuck's working on that.
Okay.
Mainly, the security lights were going to be secure for the restrooms and the concession.
Yeah, and those.
So that will turn on automatically.
Yes, and those are pretty, those are good breaks. Because my co-sponsor, her house is right behind that seating, and she said they shine pretty bright, so, so that's good, yes. And I like the new doors, we got the new door handles. And I like that, I think those would be a lot better than what we had, to keep vandalism out, so. And I'm hoping to look at putting some security cameras up there. That will go straight to my phone.
I think that would just soak dark out there, it would just soak dark out there, at least like you walk out.
Well, and as we were painting, you know, kids come out in there and they do the donuts and the plechee, and they did it a couple of Saturdays, and I went out there and waited, and they drove by and they saw me out there in the grits. So, I mean, you know, you have, and you're going to have that. I think if we keep the vandalism from being in the field out, then it's going to be good. So we're getting there. It's looking really good, so I, I mean, you know, go by and kind of look and see what's been done. The kids have worked hard. I've worked hard.
We want, I just want personally to thank you and Keith Love for getting involved. I know we need a little bit of direction from your group, because we had Bernardo, who's road department, he's not parks and reg. So there was a little knowledge that we needed to ensure that we had parks ready for organization to move forward on, for the children to have games. So we really appreciate you stepping up and.
Mr. Bowles came out on Saturday, and his wife has helped, and so, yeah, great.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any more questions? Y'all have my number, just let me know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we have also started the RFP process to renovate City Hall. We did receive $200,000 on capital outlay funding. Keep in mind, this will not come from the general fund, this is all capital outlay funding. So right now, I'm working with the ladies in the purchasing department, and we will start that RFP process. We will also start the RFP process for the Veterans Memorial. I did have a meeting myself, the mayor, we met with a few other individuals. And we are going to go back to the drawing board and rewrite the, excuse me, we're going to, we're going to just start over. And so we're going to go out RFP, and we plan to hire an architect to put the designs together for us.
That is also capital outlay?
That is also capital outlay, that's a total of $600,000 of capital outlay funds. I'm waiting for a quote for the marquee at the theater. Hopefully we'll receive that quote. We're going to go the CES route. We have about $250,000 to actually fix the marquee at the theater, so that'll be another capital outlay project. I have a meeting at 1:00 on April the 6th on the splash pad. Our goal is to get the splash pad up and running by May 1st. That's our goal. Right now with the swimming pool, we do have major areas of concern. It's going to cost more than just a swimming pool pad. So we're still working on the pool, but right now our goal is to get that splash pad up and running by May 1st. I'm working with the EPA. They will have a site visit scheduled for April the 6th of our water waste plant. So I'm working with, let me have their list here. With Mr. Brad Clayton, Barry Ferguson, and Jerry Byan. And so they have developed an action plan for the wastewater plants. And that's in respect to a site visit that occurred on June the 27th. Wanted to thank Commissioner Bowles for the report. And so I will give you further information once EPA has their specific site visit. Again, that will be scheduled on April 6th.
What time will it be?
That'll be at 9:00 in the morning. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, that's all I have for now. At this time of extent, are there any questions that you may have?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura. Mayor Commissioners, Crystal is here tonight, she asked me to give you an update. Goodness. One of the things that went to the east, E T D, 2101 West First Street, the 1428 North 7th, and 502 Lone Star Lane. They were not approved for a zone change, but they were approved and going for the special use route, and that will go to the county commission at their next meeting. She wanted to update on Jackson Street. They finished, they're between 4th and 5th, and 9th Street is completed, and now they're doing 4th, 5th midway there to the main street. They've started doing that, and they're going to be repainting that. She wanted me to update you on that. I wanted to give you an update as far as animal. We did a shock clinic on March 21st. A huge thank you to the City of Hobbs Animal Adoption Center and Pet Co grant that they were able to obtain for free vaccines. 404 animals were vaccinated on Monday, which is a huge and wonderful turnout. 42 cats, 362 dogs. Thank you to all the citizens who came out and took advantage and was able to get their animals vaccinated. Very, very important. Also wanted to update you that we're having the spring cleanup, so we were doing two large item cleanups a year. We had kind of slowed that down with COVID. We are back in action, and that is taking place. And we will be calling everybody back throughout the rest of this week and reserving and letting you know what day we'll be by to pick up your stuff. So that will be happening first week of April. And that's all as far as I have for updates, any questions?
Of course, yeah, I'm sorry. On the Jackson project? I'm just curious that you, I know you have some knowledge about it, but I played down that first section they paved, there's a spot they didn't pave. Is that all concrete right there? It's like right there on 7th Street?
I think there's a manhole cover there.
There's a manhole cover there, but if you notice there's a strip, I would have said it's concrete all the way across that. So I was just curious, I didn't go over it at a high rate of speed because it'd be smooth. So I didn't stay long.
I was going to make a comment that I think that they did a good job, probably nice.
But I was just, I didn't know if that's concrete or what, so I was confused.
I was trying to have an answer for you, or she will by the next time we meet.
There are two of those little manhole thickener things on Main Street that have.
Yeah, okay. I can get with Bernard on that.
But I do agree with you, they have done an excellent job, with the paved streets and thing right now.
Thank you, Laura. To the Attorney McMahon.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't have anything to do to report, but what stand for questions if you have.
Any questions for McMahon? Thank you, sir. There's no question for McMahon, moving on, public comment.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Robert Roberts. Anyway, you have a non-action item later in this, and I just, as my last chance to be part of the public, kind of wanted to get my position known, so that in the next 96 meetings or so, if they want to bring rocks, bring rocks, but. Anyway, it has to do with term limits, and I just want everybody to know as a citizen that I'm affected with term limits. And I hope that in the discussion and everything else, we come to a reasonable solution to this process. Anyway, like I said, from now on, I'll be out there. I encourage the citizens to always come up, make public comment, so that we know how the citizens feel, what do you like, look forward to the next meeting, and I'll act, not just one of the loathens and citizens, want to thank you all, and I'll see you next time.
Yes, sir. Maybe Tim Boister. And I'd like to, what Robert was saying, I would like to see the chairman members also. And I would like to see that the mayor is elected instead of chosen. And there's a lot of people out there that I've said I've talked to feel the same way. So you may, you know, take into consideration, I think it would be better for the people of this town that they have, and they have a word in saying who is mayor, who is not mayor going forward. So, so, I see.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No other public comment? Moving on to non-action items. See, many more teams.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, at this time, we would like to recognize Commissioner Bernard Butcher for his years of service to Lovington, New Mexico.
I'd like to present this plaque to Commissioner Bernard Butcher this evening for his eight incredible years of outstanding service for the City of Lovington. Many times, folks have always talked about me and Bernard always hanging out. The thing about it is Bernard and I hung out at every event that the city had. He was a good guy. He was a good guy, you know, good commissioner, always was there. When there was a open house, he was there. When there was a public forum of any sort, he was there. I was there with a lot of, a lot of people that, well, man, you Bernard partners, or not partners. We just showed up to every event. That's our duties as commissioners. And I want to definitely say that about Commissioner Bernard. He was at every event and he supported the city of Lovington. He supported the employees. Everything always came first before he, he was always second in his line items. So I just wanted to say thank you so much on behalf of the Board of Commissions for their years of service.
Not even gonna come when all that, like I said, it's been an honor. I've worked with a whole bunch of commissioners, new and old. And like I said, let's let Lovington just keep doing its thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. At this time, I would like the Director of the Senior Center to give a five-minute update presentation on the center.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Sophia Ferguson, I'm the Director of the Senior Citizen Center here in Lovington. And for the time, we're open Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And all of our activities are back in full swing. We started our day night last week and we had six people, I think, show up. And they enjoyed their time and they were they said that they had a good time and I hope some more people come into the center. We also have our transportation services going again. There, we've had, we've only been open about a month. We've done about 89 transports in that month. So it is a service that we do need here in the city. As far as the transportation, they need to go to the grocery store. They need to go to the dog's appointment. Now, our radius is a five mile radius, so it has to be in the city, you know, in our five miles that we can go. Let's see. We also provide home delivered meals for the homebound. We're averaging on the homebound meals. Since last July, we've done 9,420 home delivery. We've done 2,562 congregant meals and 5,181 grab and go meals. So we serve the congregant meals in the building and then we serve the grab and go still for those who aren't comfortable to the building. We've also done 8,850 well check calls and that's time spent as well. So we're checking on seniors. We're making sure they're, they've got what they need and if they need help or if they can try to do the best we can. They can also come in the center and play cards and dominoes and pool. They have an exercise equipment they can use in the library. They can put puzzles together and then to crochet through cancer motion that needs their every beat to help people who want to learn how to crochet or get or just sit and visit and crochet. We also have a appropriation that Representative Pettigrew got for us for $59,000. We're getting our doors repaired because they're in very bad shape. There's some of them that are unsated, okay? And we need those doors repaired. And for the extra amount, because the total amount on the doors was So we also went back to the state and it gives another $9,973 to go with that to be able to cover the cost of those door repairs. So any questions?
The meals, you said that was from, is that a year?
July, just from July.
From last July?
Yes.
That's almost 78,000 meals.
78,700, 70,170. And we've done most of that short term. We want to make the seniors I don't know the word I was thinking of. We want them to feel like, you know, they're still don't know the word, sorry. It's not gonna come to me. We just try to do our job the best we can and protect our seniors the best we can. That's why we're still requiring them, you know, we encourage them to wear their mask still in the building. And my staff still wears their masks in the building. So we're trying to protect them the best we can.
You're not just doing what you're succeeding. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anything else?
Also wanted to recognize you, Baker, for getting the funds available for your center. I know you did that by yourself all last year. We had a lot of discussing, discussing you and I. But you were the one that went out and solved these funds and made them available for the seniors. On behalf of the board, I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. At this time, we would like to discuss city water conservation and water restrictions. We would like Ms. Laura Block to give a short presentation and then we can open it up for discussion.
Mayor Commissioners. Ron and I have been working hard at this. He came to me and asked to put something together. He can explain and elaborate on the importance of the water conservation. I just wrote the ordinance and basically what I did is I looked at what Hops was doing and there were ordinance and this is straight from theirs. And it talks about the restriction period again from May 1st to October 1st. Even street address with even calendar years, odd street address on odd days of the calendar year. From May 1st to October 1st, all outdoor watering of grass, trees, plants, or other vegetation shall occur only during one of the following designated watering periods, which are between hours of 4:00 AM and 8:00 AM and between hours of 7:00 PM and 11:00. When there is the 31st day of the month, having 31 days, there will be no watering allowed. The restrictions shall not apply to water usage applied primary and in course and conduct of business activities. And you can go through the read. I'm just kind of highlighting through some of this. During the water restriction periods upon written application and $25 fee for a special permit, they can apply for watering for 21 days for new seed, 10 days for new sod. And then if they have, they can ask for something a little longer, but the greatest length of time is only gonna give up for 30 days on special reasons on why they need to, and they'll have to come in and apply for that. In the event that conditions exist that virtually affect the availability of water due to climate conditions, plant breakdown, capability of the treatment plant, low water supply or otherwise, the city manager for the acting city manager, his absence, media flare, water emergency. And we also have that in our ordinance already on emergency type situations. Another thing that is the way the water waste. We currently do have an ordinance that speaks on water waste that is very short and simple. This goes into a great, greater length of detail on what that entails. And then it also talks about the restrictions don't apply to the following. So there's things such as water that's applied as dust control measures, because we do have that ordinance for dust control. So, I mean, they'll be able to do those type of things. It doesn't apply to stuff like that. It doesn't apply to water that's applied to prevent or evade health, safety, or accident hazards when alternative methods are not available. Flow resulting from routine inspection, operation, or maintenance of utility water supply system. Also, the fire department doesn't apply even when they're opening up the fire hydrants and testing those, making sure the pressure and everything works. The next section is the special assessment for violations and restrictions. So when a violation occurs, a notice of special assessment setting forth to particular violation, it will be served on the member of the household or employee of the business, 18 years of age or over, or mailed by certified registered mail return receipt request to the party and whose name at the address in which the water services are provided. So it will be given to the person who has the water service. For the first violation in a calendar year, it's gonna be $50. On a second, it's going to be $100. The third violation was $300. There is an appeal process. So unless it's appealed, that violation and the assessment of that fine shall be included as an additional water usage charge on the next billing cycle. So it will be billed to them. Once you've received your notice, within seven days of the receipt of any notice, they can ask for a hearing to be scheduled if they feel that they are not in violation. If we didn't, we do not get that hearing, then it will be assessed and they will see that on their next work. And that's pretty much covers any, any questions? Ron, if you'd like to speak on the importance of water conservation and why this is important.
I believe you were in space with us. So me personally, I take my work home every day. And Lovington improves my work and my guys' work, or even in the better. It's very simple. You need it. I would rather take a shower at night, my kids take a shower at night and see some of his grass or waste it while you're alive. That's legitimately skinny of me. There's no, nothing in this world more important than our life as a city at that point, as a person at that point. So restricted, I may not say away from everybody, not say don't water your grass, not to be rude, but stop wasting it. It's pretty simple. We don't actually have a treatment plant to reclaim or replace water that we irrigate with. We water it in the middle of the day and it's probably creepy living in the desert. All said and done, it breaks off. It's not doing anybody's your thing. I mean, I'm not a botanist. I don't know how things grow. That's not what I did for a living. That's not what I do for a living. I do water. I think this is important. I very much appreciate this actually pass, not just be considered a pass as an actual ordinance to respect water. We ran the water. I shut the town down with water. Our computer system glitches. We're out of water four hours. Everybody using water in the summer, eight hours. I know how much water we use. It's a lot, but we can't plunge it. What we pull out, we don't have to plunge it a year. It's a huge job. We're pulling out a small section. And what it takes to get it to well, it takes to get water rights, what it takes to get land to do that, expensive. We will save money in the long run. So yeah, we'll save, we'll save on energy costs for our living. All that's all good and sweet, but if you don't have water, it really doesn't matter how much you spend, how much a citizen spends on water. They'll pay for the water. We spend a lot of money on water meters. They'll pay to increase your revenues. People complain about high bill all the time. I get it. I understand. I pay water bill and it can be high. I water three big dogs. Well, it's great, but some people water the grass every single day, three times a day. They won't complain about three hundred dollar bill. I don't care that they pay three hundred dollar bill. I care that there's water tomorrow. We take charge and and long run, it is more for long run. It's not just a short game. It's a session and success above continue to save where it's at.
Ron, something to elaborate on is that I recollect that over 20 years, our wells were sitting at 60 feet, right now they're at 100 feet down.
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's pretty much a calculation, broad calculation. We've lost 40 feet of water within 20-year period. So you imagine 20 more years if we, I don't think there's that much depth below that 100 foot. So I just, I just remember years back, in the paper, so for the Commissioner, County Commissioner and being able to address it and the wells are sitting at 60 feet. And now our city wells are sitting at 100 feet down. So you're looking at 20 years later, 40 feet down, 20 more years, like I said, it'd be 140 feet. So I don't even know if we have that much water. So this is something we need to really look at and ensure that we're supported and we have full participation of the community.
So how long does it take from the point of, you said we got four hours with the water supply? From the time we shut it off, right?
From the time we shut it off, we shut down our entire system.
So how long does it take to read from the point of complete drain to up in full service again? What time?
About 10 days without tanks, full water bucket, our air box, which creates more, which creates more hassle and
So 10 days.
It's a recharge our system fully.
So what would be the, instead of how do we correct that problem? Because it sounds like we're not managing our water properly as a complete system to me. Because you're having to shut down the entire town and you should be able to bypass that so where you don't have to shut down certain areas. So what would, what would we have to do in our infrastructure to improve that? Where if we did have a leak, say, not on Main Street, somewhere else, please, anywhere else in Main Street, great. That we didn't have to shut that down. Can you come up with a plan that gives us a better system to where we can jump in with something or you're gonna have to add more water catchers and more wells? Because the fact of the matter is, as Lovington continues to grow, it sounds like we're behind the curve. Because if you don't have a four-hour reserve, that's not much of a reserve.
That's just
Understand, but you still gotta see where I'm getting at. You're shutting down a complete system when you should be able to bypass or isolate certain areas.
Yes, sir. But I'd like to say that, I know Ron recently took over, but in our plans, that's why we have a new holding tank. We have the design for it, but it's over a million dollar tank. And that was, that was gonna be the offset of this situation that we're in right now with the replenishing.
But there's still the fact that, like you said, there's not enough valves to bypass and do different things to reroute to keep a majority of the system up and just isolate. Electric company, you know, something goes down, they can reroute different flows and different things like that. So we need another system. That way we can, can go out for, you know, state funding or whatever, but not make our system better without massive complete redo. So we need to figure out a plan there. So the system stays up except for the smaller areas.
Yes, sir. 100% agree. I would love to see service outs put in or new piping put in. I'd love to have the crew to do it myself, to correct. If that were to be something that we had the funds for, that's what I'd be asking for.
But might be able to be, let's have a plan first before we go for the funding. Let's go with the plan.
Well, as of the moment, it's just conservation. It's what I'd like to see. If you don't have that, being ahead of the curve, it is a long game. All the rules.
Understand, but at $5 gas, I'm pretty sure most people, the first thing they're gonna put is water. So, because you can look at our gardens, I'm looking at the majority of the people in my neighborhood, that's beautiful there, not me. But a lot of people are already doing that, you know? There's always a few exceptions. Don't get me wrong, but you know, it's a it's a, it's a tough, tough area because people want their water and some people want a yard. They're willing to pay whatever cost to have that yard.
So we're willing to pay for it, increase our revenues, then we can get better infrastructure. It's a willing to pay for it. We run up on water rates, we run up on wastewater rates just to cover costs for wastewater that have had upgrades and water have had upgrades. Unfortunately, getting up to that curve like you're saying, we will save more. And we gotta put the labor. We will be, so we actually have to put hard work in. This is something that will probably upset some, a lot of others, I'll just say. Which if they want to pay for it, that's fine. That will increase our revenues. That will increase us, or we can get better infrastructure and better plant, or we can add a plant and then we would like to have revenue for it.
I think also, Ron, talk more about that is that the inserted valves that we're doing on the Main Street.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's gonna be very helpful, the two million dollar worth of investment infrastructure included, inserted valves. But an inserted valve, they run a piece $30,000. So it tells you how much the cost is to even, the magnitude of the cost to, you know, redo the systems in the means. So it's, it's gonna take quite, quite a bit to do something like that. But I know that was part of the inserted valves. So I know that was part of the design to ensure that what we replace inserted valves, how we could shut the city off instead of without kind of shut down the entire city. When we're replacing inserted valves right down Main Street. So I know that was one thing Ron took initiative to do when we were doing this Main Street project.
So one more question. How many gallons per day during peak season does the city of Lovington use? Just give me the information. That's fine. I don't know. It's a curve ball there. 1.2 billion gallons a day. And then tell me what our max capacity of flow is.
Depends on the transition line.
Understand.
First flow, what we've got, ocean out, or
Also turn down a little minute.
I saw 1300 gallons per minute. So we're probably pushing more than that. I'll sell my head. I don't have documents. I don't have a paper in front of me. So the numbers I'm giving you are I saw 1300 gallons per minute. So we're probably pushing more than that. I'll sell my head. I don't have documents, I don't have a paper, I'm not making, so the numbers I'm giving you are probably all.
That's fine. It's pretty good.
At the moment, sir, that is not a question that I can actually actively answer at this point.
That's fine.
On that, the infrastructure though, C900 drove, that's 27 leaves on C900. I didn't put in, it was random. It put a rock underneath the belt, each one out. That's branding fighting. The other stuff that we have such as what wasn't Main Street, this 78 years old, wherever they put it in. And that blows up, that's stuff for gas. That stuff lasts longer than what we had out there. It wasn't a credit problem. Same thing, what's going in on Main Street? It's being vetted properly and inspected, where there's not rocks underneath. So I don't wanna dig both the deep on some of those things. Or anybody in the future that has it. But for the infrastructure, that is something that we definitely have to get into that term. We're behind. Okay. Thank you.
You have any questions? Final one question?
I went back to the conservation side. Um, our new cannabis growers take one gallon of water per pound of production per day. So is there a way to put some kind of meter or something that they have to have so we can show they aren't watering on their offing?
Now, they're, they're gonna be exempt from this because that's what they're doing as a business. So that's, um, that, that seems, that's their business activity. So their business, that's a business, a component of a business activity. So that's not watering your grass and that's not washing your vehicles and watering down.
No, they're watering the rocks. Uh, they're, they're weed. It takes more water per year from the average family for the cannabis.
Right, but this isn't about cannabis and that should be about yearly cannabis.
I just looked into it lately in this conference and I thought, I'm gonna read on that. So just.
Right. We'll not actually deal with any of that. So that is not gonna work.
Good point.
So this will be just to like the watering of your yards, things like that. This is something that Hobbs has been doing for many years. People still have beautiful lawns over there and, you know, abide by the, the rules and stuff like that. I don't see it causing a lot of issues. And, but I just know it. This needs to work. I did call the, the water department and I did speak with them. And this seems to be working, this process has been working well. They haven't had to amend it or have any issues with it. Patrick asked, who's gonna be enforcing it? It will be a collaboration of departments between Ron, Wendy and myself. Uh, we will all be, um, working together to make this happen and to, you know, enforce the, his technicians out in the field will be able to do things. You also have the burden of proof, just like anything you do and taking it forward hearing. And the city will have the burden of proof showing that they were violating the rules.
Thank you.
And we would like direction. If this is something y'all would like to do to move forward, would you like us to bring it back as a, as a resolution to put this out for the public to, um, see and have comments on, move forward on it? Or do you want it to just?
No, I think we need to put that as action item. Say, man?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, at this time, we would like to discuss, uh, term limits for commissioners.
Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I did have that put on the agenda or discussion. I, as I was going around campaigning, as, I was calling Commissioner Roberts Mitch, and I had a lot of people ask me about, you know, why don't the city have term limits like county and stuff like that? And I, well, answer I give 100, no. But, uh, that's the reason as God is honest, a lot of people, uh, some people, I shouldn't say all the people, and they're always asking, you know, we need change, this and that. But in reality, dealing, speaking with some of the commissioners too, it's, uh, I really think it would be a hard item to do because I've been here, as long as I've been here, it took me six to seven years to really fully understand city's business. And I can understand why people do want change sometimes. There's nothing wrong with that. You have to have change to move forward, but that's the reason it's up for discussion. Or, you know, uh, non-action items. Because a lot of constituents out there, they're just, they're asking you, you know, I have certain people asking, why don't the city?
So can I ask you a question? Since we're having a discussion?
Yes.
My question would have been this, why didn't you run for that position? I mean, the reality is, um, in the 14 years I've been here, I, the, my first term, uh, the guy who had this seat, I swear this seat is cursed, for 32 years. I'm on my 14th year. And in 14 years, other than my first term, only one other man's ever run against me. In the 14 years I've been here, Commissioner Trios only had one person run against him. The question is, who's gonna fill the seat and what does the term limit change? You want the seat, run for it. You know, that's, that's the deal. Everybody talks about, you know, I, I'm the one running against you. Well, why? Do you have a problem with me serving? Or is it, you know, you're afraid that I might be the better man? Which one is it? Is it harder for you to feel that I beat you? So my question is, I mean, I realize in certain areas, term limits work, but in city government, we barely can get people on boards, barely get people to show up at, uh, volunteer deal. It's, it's pretty tough. So, you know, if you go on a term limit, run against me, do a better job, get me out. Pretty easy way I look at it. Every four years it's up. So, I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
And I would be afraid if, you know, I ran and the seat was empty, it's these people not gonna get you to go and fill the seat.
And if nobody in that district wanted to, so who are you gonna pick on a district who wants that seat? Let's say, let's say for instance, uh, let's say Robbie didn't run. No offense, Robbie. But if you pretend Robbie didn't have that nudge to push him to run, and let's say the unforgiven happened, like Commissioner Combs. And you didn't have a person step in, who are we gonna get in your district? Who's, who's active in their, who's active in Butcher's district right now? Somebody raise their hand from Butcher's district. Raise your hand, pretend like you're in a district. There you go. Talking about one person in the district. And that was a lie. So, I mean, so we see the struggle we have here. I mean, term limits would be great if you had an active person and people constantly wanna get in it. I get it. I get it, you know? But honestly, um, this is the hardest job I've ever had. I've worked on a job for 27 years. This one takes, uh, pretty thick skin. It takes a good, you know, to figure out your budgets and understand how the, the business works. People, some people can pick that up. But I think it would be a detriment to the community because sometimes there are people that serve, you know, on that board and they do a good job. I would be willing, I'm gonna call you out. I know you're hotting over there. You took your hat off. So, be honest with me, Commissioner Jackson, how long did it really take you to understand the county commission's seat? And you have term limits.
Probably one full term at least.
A full term, but, but you're on your last one and you understand it better now than you did even in your second or third term, probably. You know, so, I mean, I'm kinda against it, you know? But I would really like somebody to run against me because, you know, that way I'm not here for 32 years like Mr. Harris.
Ask me a question.
What question do you want me to ask you?
I want you to ask me, how many people do we have? We live in a big city where we have a huge pool to pick from and be different, but we don't have that.
We don't have that. Well, you're correct. But the fact of the matter is, how do you get people involved? You know, what are you trying? Don't get me wrong. I see people try, but we've, we've created a community that has now become, you know, for the longest time I've heard, Loveyton was a bedroom community. We're not a bedroom community. We've become a band camp. I hate to say it, you know? We have a band camp that has the law enforcement. We have a band camp that has a park. You know, these guys do a good job. Don't get me wrong. But the, the fact that 90% of the people who live here work outside. The only people that work inside, the fire department, police department. And when we come back in it, well, you probably do too. We sew something for now. So maybe I'm wrong, you know? Maybe Robbie will come in and show me different. I'm hoping, you know? I, I want the best for my community, but term limits? Maybe I'm wrong. So.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd, I'd like to make a short comment on that as well. Is that it's sad to see how the voting turnout has gotten least. Every time, you know, I look at it, uh, for instance, uh, when Commissioner Robbie and Commissioner Bernard ran, uh, the vote turnout was less than first time Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner Bernard got 136 his first time around. There was only a tally of about 128, uh, this 125, yeah. And so, you know, and you hear all this, well, uh, the public outcry, well, she, if there's a fire, I don't see too many people running to the fires because it seemed like, if there was a fire, a lot of people would be running to, to the fire. And it seemed like nobody's running. There's nobody's voting, nobody's participating. But yet they, they're, you know, like Commissioner Gandy said, you gotta have thick skin up here because, and maybe nobody wants to step up here because you lose a lot of friends. You make a lot of decisions and you gotta stand by a decision. One day they love you, next day they hate you. And I guarantee, just like I told Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Bo, when they come on, everybody's gonna love you. Your first, first terms, you start making decisions, you start creating meetings. Uh, and it's not on purpose. You're just doing what you feel is best for your community. And, uh, so I, I agree with Commissioner Gandy is that they just work. I mean, quit being lazy, get out and vote. And, uh, and, uh, if you wanna make a change, step up, you know, it's not easy. And I know how, uh, a lot of people are, it's not easy. They don't wanna do it. And this job is not easy at all. Not at all. Any other discussion? There's no further discussion. Move on then. It's not.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution, 2022, that, oh, okay, the donation of the Loveyton Police Department Dispatch Council Unit to the League County Communication Authority.
I'll say that. Motion made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, Chief Brandon.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, it's, uh, first of all, dispatch console, it's about the size of a VCR, uh, data, so, uh, but it costs up to $50,000. It is used for the dispatching of first responders. We had one, it broke in November of last year. That was before the dispatch merger. So we were forced to dispatch our police through handheld radios, which is not very safe for, it's not very good for officer safety. Um, I was told by Tom Jenkins of Caprock Communications, and first sent it to him, he couldn't fix it. He had to send it to the manufacturer. He informed me that it would cost up to $50,000 to fix it. Meantime, in January of 2022, we worked with LCCA, so basically rendered this piece of equipment obsolete. As well, Eunice and Tatum merged with them as well. LCCA has expressed an interest in this console, whether they can fix it or not. Uh, they would like it donated. I would point out that they have saved this city over half a million dollars through dispatch merger, through donation of $150,000 of laptops for patrol cars. The county donating four police units. Uh, so I would make a motion to donate this piece of equipment to LCCA.
Turn to discussion. No discussion. Roll call, Shannon.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Butcher?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Here for you.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do I have a motion?
Got to bring a big motion, a motion 2022, that serves that approval of lauders tax, probably recommendation.
Motion was made by Mr. Bo, seconded by Mr. Wyatt. Freddie, is that all?
Uh, yes, we had had a, uh, lauders tax meeting. Um, there was a little bit of discussion about, uh, an ordinance and the interpretation thereof about allowing advertising. Um, so when we first looked at this, we had taken anything out of five applicants, uh, that had anything to do with advertising. But after that discussion, uh, we ended up taking that, uh, you know, we took that out of, out of the discussion, um, and then just looked back at each individual, uh, event and had discussion about the intent of lauders taxes to try to bring in, uh, overnight stays to replenish the lauders tax fund. And so, uh, that's kind of what determined how much of the, the 35,000 that we recommended to, um, disperse out for the quarter, we determined the breakdown based on that. Um, and so you can see that on the far right-hand column there. And so that's how we came up with those numbers and, um, the lauders tax board requested that we look at, you know, a different way to determine these, uh, breakdowns, but really, you know, I, I don't know exactly how it would be done any better. They have a kind of a score sheet determination, but, um, I think in the end, it just came down to, as a city determining how much to put into the pile and then have the lauders tax board make the recommendation of how to split that amount. So that's kind of how we came up with, with these numbers here. Um, we are open to suggestions for how to, how to do it on a quarterly basis. You know, what's fair and how to, how to sort this money out, but, um, this is kind of how we came about it for this quarter. Of course, it being the first time that I've been involved in the process. You know, I wasn't really sure how it had been done in the past, but.
So, uh, the request is 35,000?
Yes. And that actually, we had, um, we have, we sent, I just looked earlier today and there's supposed to be 78,000 in that lauders tax fund right now. Um, and so, but taking in consideration how over the next quarter, 35,000 gets spent, how much comes back into that fund? So that we can try to somehow maintain enough funding for the remainder of the year. So, um, all of that kind of has to be taken, be taken into consideration when we determine how much to, to disperse out. And then like I said, we let the court make the actual determinations of each individual event.
Yeah, that brings something up right there. Uh, the little roughly right there, when you said your funding, uh, funding request and what the balance is, the balance has occurred, uh, over the past two years. So you see that it's less than 100,000. So in one quarter, most likely, there may only be 10,000 to distribute from. So, uh, something to take note of, that, that they're kind of as much as, I think, 35,000, this is probably the biggest we'll probably let out thereafter. Uh, being on the conservative side, just like Freddie Muscinity said, that, uh, we definitely have to be concerned, concerned about it because it has to last throughout the year. And on a quarterly, probably a quarterly basis, probably only bring in about 10,000. So, uh, not a lot to go around.
And I do need to, uh, this, this is another audit, you know, extensive audit that I need to, to perform, um, not only on the, the expense side of, from this fund, but also the revenue side to the fund. Um, to determine that our collections have been timely, accurate. There's, there's a lot that, um, is done on, on just that revenue side, making sure that it's getting replenished. Um, and, but this was one of our larger quarters and of course, these events haven't taken place for a while. And so I believe that they really did wanna, um, put a lot into these to get them back up and running again for the community. So that, that kind of played a part in considering how much to, to release out for the quarter. So.
Have you come up with a formula for Chamber of Commerce? How much do we pull from this fund to, uh, you help them, it's half or all, or how do we?
So, yeah, so that actually came up today. Um, and Jaylene brought me the, the agreements for those sort of fundings. And, uh, so, yes, we have a separate fund, of course, for the LITA account. Um, and we have different. And we have different sources of funding to that account. But the, should say it's half, but, um, really, I, I'll look into a lot of that in the process of this budget because it's an easy way for me to capture all of the revenues, all the expenses in one, in one project. And so, um, I think July was the time when we looked at these sort of, uh, fundings. And so when that comes around, we'll definitely have, uh, more of an idea of what we're funding to each one of these, so Chamber, Main Street, um, and LITA Economic. So we can have a better look at what those fundings are, because there's, there's a lot of different sort of fundings that crop up over the year. And so like I said, this was one that, that, that happened today, and so I was asking for an accounting of, of what those agreements are. Um, and so at some point this summer, we're gonna need to, to have the commission make a determination of those funds going forward. And so by then, I can have some information about those different sources of, of expenses, so.
If I may, Mayor, in the financial report, it does give, um, the obligations for each quarter. So it'll show each obligate, or each quarter, we're obligated to give eight thousand seventy-five to Main Street Chamber and then twenty-five hundred to Museen, and then we take out some to pay for some of the Fourth of July fireworks. And then there's some for public service to these events. So that does show some other expenses that come out of this account too, on that financial report.
Yeah, I believe it, and that part, I don't, this, tax funding, it doesn't reflect that. That's the thing about it, you got thirty-five thousand dollars for expenditures, unless you're not reflecting everything that, that is, that were put into it in January, well, this entire fiscal year, from July one to this one. If you add that into that, your balance, right, your, your, your balance may be only twenty thousand, or maybe less, maybe ten thousand. So, so what I'm saying is, we approved this and haven't approved it, but the thing about it is, I don't know if it's,
Well, and there were.
I know it's recommendable to, to approve this this evening because it says thirty-five thousand, but yet we have probably about three other areas that, that are still, I mean, that we don't have calculations for to show the true whole balance, is what I'm saying.
There, was there an ordinance for our percentage of, our retainage? Or was that just something that we used as a guidance through the past? Like the reserve, the reserve, yeah.
Can I speak when we had the lodger tax board?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm Robbie Roberts. I've been on the lodger tax board for about twenty years. And, uh, first of all, it was the first time that our new city manager and our new managing director were privy to this particular board. In addition to that, I retired, uh, resigned from the board because I felt it was, there's no reason for me to be on a board and go to approve something only to turn around and be up there approving what I approved on that statement in that voting. But the twenty years we've been doing this, uh, especially with the previous, uh, city manager, we've worked on a lot of different ways of coming up with the best use of this fund. And what we have now is basically kind of the best that we can come up with and work with the groups that come and ask. I wanna bring to light a few things that hopefully I was able to, uh, to bring to the new members. In addition, please understand, we also have, well, we now three new members to the board. I think the only two that will be left from the previous, and the previous timely management was well over two years ago. Would, would be Kelly Windsor and Kalib Farouk. Leslie Bo has been appointed and Miss Price has been appointed, she said there, okay, sorry. Has been, been appointed on the board and hopefully one of the representatives from our two hotels here will be filling my position. But, uh, one of the things that I try to express is no event, no, nothing that occurs in the City of Lovington can ever replenish the fund for the amount of money that they asked. If you, every hotel, every room in the city were to be rented for a hundred dollars. Okay, we get five percent on top of that in lodger tax. So for every room, we get approximately five hundred dollars. So for every thousand dollars that they request, it would take two hundred rooms to replenish the fund to that amount. Now, that's events, obviously we rent rooms every night during the week when there's not events, so there's an accumulation, but this, the purpose of lodger's tax in, in its original attempt from the state is, it is events. And that brings people to Lovington, it brings, they stay here, they rent rooms here, they hopefully buy gas here, they hopefully eat here. But none of, none of the last of what I said in buying gas and eating replenishes this month because that's GRT, which the city goes to maintain the city. So it, in our, in the previous city manager and I's, uh, I guess, attempt is to let these groups know, yes, their events are important, but they have to have some money to go along with. And, um, one of the questions we put in there, and I'll, I'll be honest, our questionnaire is not as extensive as it needs to be and it needs to be rewritten. So our recommendation to the commission is, we have a big new group, uh, that are gonna be on this board. No one has a clear and concise idea of what we really want to achieve with this, other than we would like to prolong events that happen in the city to encourage new events, to, uh, to take a step out, knowing possibly they can get some money. The one thing, I'm, I'm actually served on both the lodger's, uh, the Hops lodger tax and the Lovington lodger tax. Uh, Hops does it, they do their big determination one time a year. And then successive meetings that, that they have every quarter, they kind of, they can adapt it a little bit. Rarely do they listen to requests, but there's a lot of things that we can do, uh, as the commission and as the lodger tax board, probably, I guess, fine tune this so that people would know in order to request money, what they need to request, uh, or what they need to do, what they need to provide. One of the things is, we, we've always tried to ask, how do you know how many people were there? How do you find out how many hotel rooms did they actually, you know, use while they were here? There's several things that we attempted to do, probably didn't do it in the best manner, but at least we put an effort to. Used to, we would be like, okay, we've got seventy-six thousand dollars, whatever that, whatever. Uh, we tried to keep cushion in the bank, that was basically determined by the lodger tax, which we paused. One thing I want you to understand is, you're spending money that we're gonna be collecting the next three months. Yes, that balance is there, but this is in the next quarter and you're gonna have three months of revenue coming during that quarter. So we really, when we did this, didn't take that into consideration. We just said, we made a balance in there and you know the financial director is attempting to get everything straightened out so we'll know exactly what the fund has in it. And then we can maybe move forward, so, uh, there's some work. The city manager, and as he's finding out, has a lot of work to do in all areas. This is one, unfortunately, we don't, we, or, I don't think at all, but, uh, we have another quarter, so we have not spent any money, we have not contributed any of this to local events for the past two years. We encourage events, and so when you, in your determination, this is literally the best that we felt with the group that met. At least we're able to contribute a good portion of what's requested. We understand it's not a hundred percent, it will never be a hundred percent. One of the problems we ran into, as, as we kind of put percentages on there and then what happened was, we started increasing how much they requested so that the percentage would kind of end up where they were. That system needs to be reworked. That is a definite, uh, recommendation from my twenty years on the lodger tax board. It, it's a work in progress, it needs to continue to be a work in progress. Other than that, we, in our efforts, we left enough in the fund that we feel we can continue, we still be able to, because of the funding that's gonna be coming along, still be able to contribute to the Chamber, still be able to contribute to Lovington Main Street, which is approximately half of their total funding that the city, uh, that they receive from city, uh, funding. And still be able to put the events on, give them at least enough to, to move forward and then hopefully in the next few months, get some input from either the commission. At that time, hopefully the city commissioner and the new financial director will have a good feel of where we are and where we're going to see. Other than that, I, again, I retired from the Lovington lodger tax, so that's kind of my farewell, my recommendation, my opinion, if nothing else, uh, so that we can move forward. Any questions? I've been getting to be that long with this session, I'm sorry.
Thank you. But we took the recommendations that are placed on the screen. Remaining balance would be, uh, what'd you, what'd you say, remaining balances?
Um, there's approximately seventy-seven. So based on this, there's forty-two. But a, as you was explaining, this is for the, the next quarter.
But that does include, uh, that does, what I'm saying is, so, goodbye. You're not, still not taking away what you're gonna give to the Main Street and Chamber.
Is that other attachment in there?
Yes, it's about sixty-two thousand. With the, um, Chamber, Main Street, Museen, public safety transfer, which we kind of just did, like a ten percent of the revenue we get each year, and we've divided it into fourth quarter since we haven't had any events. We've put it all in the fourth, the, all in one quarter. And this is the last, lodger tax goes behind our fiscal year, so this is technically in the fourth quarter while we're fiscally in the third quarter, but, and then a net request, which is a thirty-five, and then the July fourth fireworks comes out to sixty-two, three hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. And so that'll leave
for about seventy-eight minus sixty-two, leaves out sixteen thousand.
But we do have more coming in as well to end the balance, because we, we're still in April and until June, we'll have more in lodgers.
Yeah, so we were, I mean, we were taking into, that's why I was asking if there was an ordinance or if it was just a guideline of how much we leave in reserves. And so we did take that into account when we were trying to determine, um, I mean, we only went up, when we did our calculation the way that it had been done in the past, we only went up from like thirty-three, thirty-three-five to thirty-five. Just to round the number off, we really didn't come up much based on our calculation versus the thirty-five that got divvied up. It's like I said, we, the city, um, in, with our calculations, I guess, that have been used in the past, we, we used an old spreadsheet to come up with the thirty-three-five, and then when we were discussing it in the meeting, we added just a little bit to it because we were not taking, we had taken all of the, uh, advertisement costs out. And so when we were discussing that, they said, no, we, we never intended on having an advertisement, you know, deduction or omission. And so we said, okay, well then, we'll bump it up to the thirty-five. And then that's where the city kind of stepped out of the conversation and it was determined how much of the thirty-five each event cost.
And my point, I didn't need to make a long discussion, my point is, it took us two years to accumulate that balance, our seventy-six thousand. And right now, we're gonna replenish it, we're gonna replenish it by eighty percent, if not more than eighty percent. So I'm just saying that, uh, in the next quarter, when you lodger tax, say maybe one dollar to the account to give out to lodger tax. I'm just saying, because if we do the calculations like we're supposed to, spread the funding out like we're supposed to, the next quarter, most likely, it may just be a dollar because you have to take into consideration the coming months to take care, to keep a good solid balance, to make sure you're taking care of the two minute entities that are, uh, supported, that they, this lodger tax does support. So, uh, that, that was my concern, is that despite, we need to pass this, I'd say that, just long, at least, uh, aware that most likely, there won't be no lodger tax money available on the next quarter. I think, I mean, just a quick calculation in my head. Mr. Gandy.
I like smoking on a plaza, I like Cinco de Mayo. Not a big fan of rodeo, but, uh, there are some I'm good with, so. We, we've done it in two years, you might not be, but I've got a few deals. We're gonna love it, Dan.
Whether it could possibly be more money in that account, like some of that money, we don't have a knowledge of where or when. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Say that, say.
So I'll leave it at that.
I forget for sure that mentioned.
Yes. That'd be good, I mean, I, I'd like to, I, I like the events that are coming up. I, I'd want to like to see them happen and, uh, for us to have them. I just want everyone to be aware, most likely, it might not be enough available next lodger tax. And I think we need to live by that, if we're gonna live by these calculations and, and and everything that's in place, we don't need to make assumptions off what we feel that's gonna be coming in the next nine days and, and overspend by ourselves in a negative form of lodger taxes.
Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so on May the seventh, we have scheduled Cinco de Mayo, that'll be all day unless they change the schedule, but right now, we have for May the seventh, which is on a Saturday. Then we have the Lovington rodeo, which is on that same day, on the seventh of Saturday, May the seventh, and on May the eighth. And then on June the seventeenth and the eighteenth, which is a Friday and Saturday, is smoking.
Traffic, no matter what. Standing, further discussion? There's no further discussion, roll call Shannon.
Mr. Wyatt? Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Lodger taxes, resolution taxes, do I have a motion?
Yes, I have to make a motion, resolution twenty-two-two-zero-three-zero, approval to dispose certain city property.
Second, motion was made by Commissioner Bo, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, city staff has put together a list of items. This time I'll ask the fire chief to give a brief summary of, of the list.
Mayor, Commissioners, um, we had one, two, three, four, five, six departments that have submitted their either out of service equipment or equipment that has to be disposed of. These particular items, um, would be sent to auction, there's a three-step part to this. One is to bring it to you guys to approve and we take off of the list, or on the fixed asset list, and then we send it up to the D. And then we send it up to the DFA after that, and then they give us their plus, and we set up the auction. So as you can see, there's several, um, vehicles that are on this list. Once you get down to the streets, platform wreck, a lot of that equipment is older, not, uh, for sure on the age on most of that stuff. And then the serial numbers are also, uh, something that may not be, uh, just not be able to find. Uh, one of the trucks is a, I think a two thousand and two, right before the meeting, I got the update on that. Um, and then there's a couple of tractors on there that are like lawn hoes, not necessarily traction trucks. Um, so other than that, these are the, the list of the department, or the department lists that were submitted by the twenty fourth. So if you have any questions, I can.
I would imagine all this equipment is pretty good. Am I correct there?
I would do, uh, as well, there on the fixed asset list, list of the next, uh, step would be to make sure that we have titles for the vehicles that are on the list. And that they have been appreciated.
Well, we looked at actually, uh, looking at the golf carts we had, storage out there on the auction list. Or, I don't know how many is maintained and, uh, nearly out there, but those really need to be built. Those are some that just take making up space.
I, I would say those, um, would probably be on the list. I don't know, they were never added to the list by the deadline. Um, so those are not all yours, so that may have to be another auction down road.
We've had those several years, so that, that building that you utilize for, uh, equipment, new trucks and stuff, if they're still there. Just sure I haven't been in there. And I think we just gave them all away, but I would like to be.
No, we can't, not, I am first. Those are donated golf carts from the city of Hobbs.
Yes.
Uh, that we were donated, I think about two, maybe three years ago. Um, that was, uh, utilized for special events, Smoking on the Plaza and stuff like that.
They're just sitting there taking up space because we've, we've really used. That's just a thought, you know?
A small culture, old leather?
No, the old, the old store hold that. That is, this was the one that was donated from Hobbs about, uh, ten years ago, eleven years ago.
I think one of the objectives, when I talked to city manager, was that I just didn't want to see a bunch of old stuff laying around and go to clean it and then move that old stuff to one side of the yard, just to clean that little spot and then move it back. Uh, you know, you're looking at man hours, you know, just management. And I, I'd made that recommendation, yeah, let's clean up everything, anything that's no good. Just get it rid because, uh, it's just man hours, man hours, trying to keep cleaning around and moving it one, like I said, moving it from one yard to the next. Uh, so it's good that we, we, this is good, sorry.
Any of them, uh, police vehicles are we using at the moment?
Yes, sir. We do still have two, two thousand and ten Dodge Chargers that are operable, but these are really junk.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion, roll call, Chen.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. White? Yes. Mr. Gang?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Resolution passes, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make motion, resolution twenty twenty two dash zero thirty one, appointment of city manager as trustee to the meritorious pension.
Which was made by Commissioner Gandy, second by Commissioner Bowles. Any discussion? If no discussion, no call.
Mr. Gang?
Yes.
Mr. White? Yes. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Resolution passes, do I have a motion? Come on, we're, I'm on the, I want to.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty twenty two zero thirty one, appointment of city manager as trustee. Okay, exactly. I'm honestly, I'm all that's saying, exactly.
Yeah, the wording through, where is it?
Zero three two, approval to advertise ordinance five eighty eight and ordinance to the city of Lovington. You may amend the entitled by chapter forty dash zero ninety cannabis license registration and permitting.
Second, motion was made by Mr. Bernard, second by Commissioner Gandy. Reportizing, we went over it in the last meeting.
Mayor, commissioners, I think together this amendment, something that was discussed at the last meeting that we, when we approved the ordinance, I did go in, everything is highlighted in red for you on what the changes were going to be on that. It is, so one of the things that we talked about is the alcohol and the cannabis. So in the alcohol ordinance, you did a waiver, whereas on this cannabis ordinance, it's going to be a variance. The reason it's a variance, not a waiver, is the state handles it in a variance form, not a waiver form on the cannabis. So that's why you didn't see it coming for you as a waiver. And it was handled in this way. Again, it had a couple of changes in the red on that for definition and, um, to define and get a little bit more, um, quality to it. There's some stuff that whenever I was looking at the alcohol and cannabis stuff, amendments that were changed just in wording to, to make it more clear. Do you have any questions? Happy to answer, try my best.
Mr. Gang? No further discussion, roll call, Chen.
Mr. White? Yes. Mr. Bell?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Gang?
Yes. Yes.
Resolution passes, do I have a motion? I think I made a motion, financial report. Motion was made by Commissioner Bowles, second by Commissioner White. Attorney.
Um, I will stand for any questions on the expense approval report. Um, but something that was, that was brought up, um, by city manager Martinez, um, would be to establish a finance committee. Um, that would be made up of a couple of different members of the commission to have kind of more of a working, um, look at, at some of these things that we're looking at. Um, there's obviously challenges that I'm up against, um, for what I'm able to make changes of and what needs to come before the commission. Um, we go probably more into detail about certain, I, um, it would be a good, uh, I saw that in the previous budget, um, schedule. They have had a kind of a working budget with the commission, um, of, you know, I don't know if they have done that on annual basis. Uh, but something like that would be a good function of that finance committee. Um, another suggestion was that we, and this would be very, very helpful for me, would be to put together a fee schedule, that's citywide. Um, and then that could be published to the community of this, we charge this fee for this service and this fee for that service. And that would help to, um, try to ascertain what those fee revenues are. Uh, because we just have lots and lots of different revenue accounts. And something that I've discovered in sitting on the one-on-one with the managers is not all the department managers are even aware of what, what fees are charged or how that revenue is generated, or even where that revenue is going. And so that's, that's part of my challenge is to try to get my arms around, um, all of our different revenue sources. Um, because, you know, some of them come in automatically by ACH and some of whom we have to invoice out. And then, uh, some are collected through our water bills. And there's all kinds of different revenue sources out there besides the main, um, gross receipts tax. I had pulled in an attempt to kind of look at that. I had the girls pull a revenue report that would be similar to this expense report. Um, and so there is a, there is the capability of doing that, but I don't know that that's completely updated because of all this other audit work that needs to be done to do the allocations properly. Um, and so getting this budget, uh, straightened out and having an actual revenue fund, uh, will be very, very helpful for me to, on a go forward for the, for the next fiscal year, knowing what those revenues are and should be, what we might not be capturing. Um, you know, what we need to, to maybe go back and audit to bill for. Lodger tax is one example of that. Um, and so those were just some suggestions that, that we do, um, so that we can capture all the revenue rather than just, say, reporting the gross receipts tax revenues, uh, on a month-to-month basis. It would give me a ma, a means of, of capturing all the different revenues. And then also what's going to be important is directing the revenues to the proper funds. Uh, because like I said, we've got repeat, we have, um, we have revenues going into general fund, and yet there's a place for us to go into the individual funds. And we can see more on a case-by-case basis what the departments are able to do on their own. Are they sustaining themselves? Um, and that goes into kind of what Ron was saying about the water department, going back and trying to assess what those expenses look like versus what the revenues were. Um, a lot of that can get cleaned up with this budget process. And so that's, I'm, I'm kind of just asking again for the additional time to get through this budget because it's going to tear up a lot of things, uh, in one fell swoop. So I don't really have anything, um, to add specifically to the, to the finance support, or finance report yet because of the things we should have talked about in the last meeting. But, um, you know, we're just in full swing of the budget right now. And, um, if you entertain a finance committee, um, I can get that going. And then you can be kind of in the working budget process. And you'll, it, it's, it's been a good teaching tool for me to learn about this specific organization and how things have been done, um, and how we need to do going forward. And I, I really am going to be changing the entire, the entire account structure. It needs to be fixed. Because we just, we have, we have so many accounts that are being diluted. Uh, we have a lot of budget accounts that, uh, work against us because there, it's almost like sandbagging those accounts when it's a hard guess. Uh, but when you add them all up together, uh, they make up for a big expense that we never even get anywhere close to on the, on the higher levels. And so, um, it really will do a lot towards setting us up next year to have more accurate data collection that will help us with the budget. We go to more of a conventional budget process next year to determine what our expenses actually were over the past year and moving forwards. Right now, we're really just starting from scratch, making the managers to get the numbers, uh, not necessarily based on past expenses because we don't believe those are accurate.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Attorney, discussion up.
We have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Uh, vendor eleven eight sixty two, New Mexico Self Insurers Fund, sixty two thousand dollars.
That, that's our workman's comp, um, premium, and is that an annual? Um, it's for, not annual, okay, so semi-annual for the workman's comp. Um, we of course hold out, um, from each paycheck. Ideally, those holdouts are going into this expense fund to then go back out as a lump sum payment twice a year.
Senator. Senator number one, two, three, six, zero, Scott's Place, what was that for?
Um, that is a HVAC contractor. Um.
I'm just wondering where it was for, I see walking cooler, walking cooler, but I don't know.
If I may? That would probably be senior.
Yes.
Senior set us, and that does save.
Okay. And, uh, we had no visas this time? Cause I saw no visas.
They, yeah, I didn't see that on here. Um, they had paid those on the last, uh, the last two weeks. Okay, so she just got the bill. So, yeah, they were paid on that last two week before, previous. Um, I, I do know that we pretty much hit our limits on those cards. We're going to have to pay them down all the way. Um, another project I need to work on is getting, getting those card, uh, limits up and getting them to the right people. Cause we, we have cards that are having to be traded around and used by different departments. And that's not the ideal situation, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. There's no further, further discussion, roll call, Chen.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gang?
Yes.
Mr. White? Yes.
Yes. On, uh, on the table, may, do I have a final motion?
Make a motion, we adjourned. So, yes.
Motion was made by Mr. Bernard, second by Mr. Gandy, attorney.